Board meeting. I mean, start off by saying welcome one, welcome all this great to see some of you out in the audience. I need a motion to, and before we get going, I need to modify the agenda. So I wanna, I need a motion to amend the agenda to include a section five A. And then section five A will be basically, we're gonna talk about J R O T C. Uh, we do have some new finding that we want to share with, so I take a motion to amend the agenda. I made that motion.
Second.
It's been properly moved by, Mr. Edward second by, Mr. Great question or discussion. Here and none. No, Walker, roll call vote please.
Yes.
Dean Edwards?
Yes.
Franklin Williams?
Yeah.
Chris Bissett?
Yes.
Mike Dunn?
Yes. Yes.
That right?
Yes.
Doctor Lawson?
Yes.
Evelyn Bullet?
Yes.
Turn on the Thomas Bullet? And Phil Stark?
Yes. Thank you. So Carrie. The next item on the agenda is the pledge of allegiance. Tonight, we have Brayden Holly, Rogan Holly, Aiden Braisworth, and Lily Ellington. If you guys would come forward, they'd be great. They are from Middlesex Elementary School. Thank you both for an outstanding job. Tonight, we have a special treat as well. We have this morning, uh, reelected officers for the Nash County Board of Education. I'm gonna ask Miss Carrie Davis. If she will come down and so graciously swear in, I'm gonna ask this, Mr. Chris. We don't need no video going on. Mr. Chris Bissett?
Good job. Okay, the right on right. Okay, repeat after me. I, Chris Bissett, do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will support and maintain the constitutional laws of the United States and the constitutional laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as a member of the Nash Board of Education. So help me God. Thank you. You say it right here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Washington, we're gonna, she need to leave. Repeat after me. I, Dr. Lashonda Washington
I, Dr. Lashonda Washington.
do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will support
That I will support.
and maintain the Constitution
And maintain the Constitution.
and the laws of the United States
And the laws of the United States.
and the Constitution of laws
and laws. and the Constitution and laws
of North Carolina
Of North Carolina.
not inconsistent
Not inconsistent.
therewith
therewith.
and that I will faithfully
And that I will faithfully
discharge the duties
Discharge the duty
of my office
Of my office.
as a member
As a member.
of the Nash Board of Education.
As the Nash County Board of Education.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Donton? Right, left. Repeat after me. I, Lane Donton
I, Lane Donton.
do solemnly swear that I will support and maintain the Constitution and the laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as a member of the Nash Board of Education. So help me God. Thank you. Right, yes, sir. You know. Yeah. Okay, okay. Okay.
Need to do an important.
Oh, thank you. Repeat after me. I feel, Dean Edwards
Uh, feel Dean Edwards.
do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will support and maintain
That I will support and maintain.
the Constitution and laws
The Constitution and laws.
of the United States
Of the United States.
and the Constitution of laws
And the Constitution of laws.
of North Carolina
Of North Carolina.
not inconsistent therewith
Not inconsistent therewith.
and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as a member of the Nash
As a member of the Nash.
Board of Education.
Board of Education.
So help me God. Thank you.
Davis, thank you for your service. And next I want to give is adoption of agenda what they said. The amendment, make the motion please. That was what I can't remember.
Second.
It's been properly moved by, Mr. Business, second by Dr. Davis, question or discussion. Here and none, all of the papers say aye?
Aye.
That's okay, Carrie. Thank you very much. Next thing on the agenda is recognition, doctors. Ellis.
But this time, I would like to recognize some very important people in our district. Shania Gilliam, nominated for outperformance, outperformance and excellence. Ms. Gilliam was nominated by a parent. His parents stated that Ms. Gilliam is her children's school bus driver. Ms. Gilliam found out that October thirty first was her daughter's birthday that she went out of her way and purchased a gift for this student. The mother said to Ms. Gill, made her daughter feel so special on her special day. She said that Ms. Gilliam always goes above and beyond and is always nice to the parents and students. She is definitely a N C P S hero. With the following students, please come forward. Elaine Dory, Emma Matthews, Lily Ellington. These students won honorable mention in the North Carolina School Boards Association Elementary Poster Contest. These posters were on display at the School Boards Association Conference in Greensboro. The theme was teachers. Congratulations to these students for their outstanding submissions. Would Anthony Cruz, please come forward? Anthony submitted a poster in the North Carolina School Boards Association Elementary Poster Contest. We are proud to announce that Anthony won first place in this contest. Congratulations, Anthony, on your winning submission. Did you want to get a picture?
Come do again. Come on, where's the move? Man, come on, we'll take another picture. That's why I was looking for us, man.
So you get to keep this, he gets?
Yes, sir.
Take a picture.
That is really good.
He blocking a baby.
Wait, you blocking the baby?
Yeah, that's it.
You know, that was awesome because I had a chance, we had a chance to receive this award at the state and there's no greater joy, no greater joy to recognize our schools and doing outstanding jobs, especially in the elementary, middle school, and high school. So it was recognized throughout the state. First place is not a small recognition. It's huge. We got all this counted in North Carolina and he took Christian. Next item with the minute one five A. Let's look McQueen and I'm gonna ask Michelle Fiskus and she will step up to the plate, please. So what we've talked about is we've been talking about J R O T C. And so Michelle has done a phenomenal job in putting this on our website. As a matter of fact, we had an opportunity to talk with, um, Lindsey, who's the governor for the state? The North Carolina School Board Associates, the governmental
Oh, Bruce Milbar.
Bruce Milbar, he's working with us and they're gonna mirror what we have here to send out across the state. And I also appreciate Mr. Edwards for your workmanship, working with the Air Force as well to try to deal with the expenses as far as they improve homes. So, this is Michelle, share with them what you have done.
Um, well, in order to garner more public support, we put it on our website. And do you mind showing that on the screen?
Keep it up, please.
Um, and so on our, um, Nash County Public Schools homepage, we rotate our gallery features. So this is featured in the second position. So if someone is interested and they don't see it immediately, you can click the number two button. It'll take it to this page, which is about supporting the J R O T C. If you, um, click on the icon, it'll take you to a landing page where we explain why we're looking for support and how you can help us. And so with that, we have, um, all the different contacts that you can, um, click on the letter and actually customize the lender and letter and send it to our different representatives. And so can you click on that letter? And so this is in a Google document, so anyone navigating the internet can download it and can, um, modify the information to enter their date, their name where they want, and then send it to those representatives that we've listed on the landing page. Sure.
This is something that is much needed and we are working through this thing. Uh, we did have meetings, conversation here with Senator Tillis off about two weeks ago. And this is going through committee, um, within the next two weeks. And I was talking to the state rep and they think we have a high rate of this passing through the, uh, board committee with the House and the Senate. So let's just keep our fingers crossed and lots of prayers that this will happen, that this is a vital source of our system or educates for our students in, um, our high school reading. We've already had to suspend Northern, Southern Nash. Northern Nash is on the verge, but if we can get the buy-in for extension, we may not have to do this. With that said, thank you. Write your representative, go to their website, download it, send it out, anybody you can work with and we both appreciate it in you doing that. Um, the next item on the agenda is public input. We do have a couple of speakers for tonight. So public input each month as part of at least one regular scheduled board meeting, we set aside time for you as citizens to come and share your thoughts, your opinion, and address it through the public comments. The sign-up sheets are available and it's in, um, but what we do not like to have is destruction by any person or persons in these public meetings. Um, if we're doing all this in accordance with General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen, day seventeen, anyone have any further questions? Please see policy twenty-three ten for the Nash County Public School Policy Section. Tonight, we have two people that's scheduled to talk. The first one is Dr. Holly Whistler. She will come.
Star?
It's Rachel.
Hello. Good evening, board and guests. My name is Holly. I'm the mom of a middle schooler and a high schooler. You might remember me. Last year, I came to talk about masks and being part of a community. Think I used a farm analogy. I have another one. My message is similar this year in that we cannot continue to do the same thing over and over again and expect different results. As a parent, I hear a lot about this policy says this, this policy says that, as if policies can't be changed. Well, I finished a doctorate in four years at U N C W. I've spent the last four years running an online consortium in higher ed to kind of get an idea of what skills it takes to analyze, evaluate, change policy. I'm a mom, former teacher, and now I'm a policy writer. And I'm here to present to you considerations for things that we can change about attendance policy. First, a little context. I'm human. I have quirks. My biggest quirk is I hate waste, wasting time, energy, opportunity. I constantly tell my kids, you wake up every day and it's a new opportunity to make a difference, right or wrong. Secondly, because of this quirk, I'm an excellent observer because you observe a lot and you don't want your time wasted. Um, you can imagine the surprise when I was nine and I asked my dad, I said, how come my two male cousins always get to drive the tractor when I have to walk the tobacco roads? So I'm not one to shy away from hard questions. Here's the hard question that I've discovered based on a lot of observation, conversation with parents like me who are, A, transplants. We don't have family here. Two, we're caring for parents. We're raising our own kids, trying to find time to give back to the community, filling in at work when there are no workers. Um, helping give rides to school, trying to purchase something in a neighbor's small business. Why does it seem like we can't solve problems? Well, we can't solve problems until we see the solution from everyone who is affected by it. Especially because the first time in history, five generations of humans are existing at the same time. And those humans have all lived through vastly different times. Current school processes and board policies have been built for a generation that no longer exists, and I repeat. School processes, board policies have been built for a generation that no longer exists. So I ask now, what do you guys know about Gen Z? Here's what Stanford University says. A typical Gen Z-er, these are ones in middle school and high school, they're self-drivers who care deeply about others, strive for a diverse community, highly collaborative and social, value flexibility, relevance, authenticity and non-hierarchical leadership. And while dismayed about inherent issues like climate change, has a pragmatic attitude about the work that has to be done to address those issues. Now, what did you expect from the spawn of Gen X? Sorry, can I keep going? Okay. Um, AKA the latchkey generation. We were latchkey kids, ready to fend for ourselves? No?
I, I would really know a little how that, um, what you're saying.
I don't have a problem. That's fine. Thank you.
Next person is Mr. Robert Cordell.
Yes, no. Mr. Board Chair, and Superintendent. When I look at the positive things that the board have done, when I look at the positive things the whole school system has done, weighing against all the negative, I can only say, you know, all kinds of stuff. All is well. The last time that I addressed you and I was not, uh, nominated for District Eight, uh, representative, I will admit it was a piercing thrill shield worked through my heart. But I can understand that, uh, even though everybody knew that, uh, applied this position four times. But like Pontius Pilate would say, "Pap in the beautiful town. Wash your hands, you move on. All is well." To the newcomer on this school board, whether it's Miss Gray, uh, Mr. Gray or Ms. Hodge. I sincerely hope that you will bring to the table ways to make our school system great. To newcomer, I just hope you bring, uh, some sort of ideals that will increase our test scores, increase the, uh, graduation rates and will decrease the dropout rates. To newcomer, I hope you bring ways to recruit and retain good, qualified, certified teachers. To the eleventh member of board, I hope you bring ways that will have no more, absolutely no more failing schools in our school system. And to the new person who come on the board, sincerely hope that you will bring some sort of answer to the, uh, transitions of both the school system. And if you do this, again, all will be well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate the comments from both our responsible parties. Next item on the agenda is business items, donations.
Please accept this request for the following donations. Willoughby Elementary School received the following grant. The North Carolina Aquarians Society in partnership with North Carolina Aquarians gave twelve hundred and fifty dollars to be used for a class field trip. Vividu Elementary School received the following donation. Word Tavern after church donated twenty-five hundred dollars to be used for steam enrichment recess stations. Parker Middle School received the following grant. Seventy-five hundred dollars in support from Mary Farabee Howard Endowment Fund, a component fund of the North Carolina Community Foundation to be used for students. And Rocky Mount Middle School received a following donation. Word Tavern after church donated twenty-five hundred dollars to be used for needed schools supplies for students.
Thank you, Dr. Ellis. I need a motion to accept these donations.
Mr. Chair, I make the motion that we accept with great appreciation.
All right, I had two people going at one time. So the first thing was in my ear was Dr. Washington, so.
And I was seconding.
It's been properly moved by Dr. Washington, second by Dr. Davis, question or discussions? Here and none, all of the papers say aye, please? So Carrie, next item is, um, Ms. Sheila Wallace's personal recommendation.
Good evening again, Chairman Sharp, Vice Chair Dr. Washington, President and virtual board members. The personnel recommendation report has been reviewed and discussed. On behalf of Dr. Ellis, your approval of the report is requested.
So we've heard the motion, or we've heard the report. I need a motion to accept the report, please. Motion, et cetera, report. Can I get a second?
Say.
So probably move by, Mr. Edward second by, Mr. Bishop, time, question or discussion? Here and none, all of the papers say aye?
Aye.
So Carrie.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next item on the agenda will be our committee meetings. We have two to report out. Um, the very first one with action, we'll be, we'll talk to those. We had strategic plan by Dr. Ellis and Ms. Michelle Fiskus. Um, I'm gonna need a motion for that and a motion for bus driver monitoring senate that represented by Ms. Wallace at committee meetings. The other ones was information on. So when I get a motion to accept strategic plan and the bus driver and monitor senate, please. It's been properly moved by Dr. Washington, second by Black Nelson?
Nice.
Yes.
Any questions or discussions? You're in on all of the papers, aye?
Aye.
Sessions. Guys, Carrie, next item on agenda with student services, Dr. Washington. No information on it, so the next item we have is uh, Policy Committee, Ms. Bullard.
Um, thank you, Chair. We have several policies uh, that we're presenting tonight for uh, first train. Um, policy number thirty-four thirty. Still improvement plan, policy thirty-four sixty, graduation requirements. Policy forty-one ten, immunization and health requirements for school admission. Um, policy forty-two forty, that seventy-three twelve, child abuse and related threats to child safety. Forty-two sixty, student sex offenders. Forty-three oh two. Uh, R rule for use of seclusion and restraint in school. Forty-three thirty-four. That fifty thirty-five, that seventy-three forty-five, drones, use of unmanned aircraft. Uh, forty-four hundred, attendant, forty-seven hundred. Student record fifty-seventy, that seventy-three fifty. Public records, retention, release and disposition. Fifty-seventy-one. Um, dash seventy-three fifty-one electronically stored information retention. And policy fifty-two forty, advertising in the schools. Those are the policies under our first um. Presentation. Um, you want me going with the other? Um, these following policies that I'm about to list now are policies that have substantial changes. That would be policy fifty-one ten, dash forty-two hundred, that seventy-two seventy, school safety. Policy twenty-one twenty, code of ethics for school board members. Policy twenty-one twenty-three, board member opportunities for uh, development. Policy thirty-two twenty, technology in the educational program. Policy thirty-four twenty, student promotion and accountability. Uh, policy thirty-four sixty, graduation requirements. And policy thirty-six twenty, extracurricular activities and student organization. The following two policies have minor uh, changes to wording or legal references and or cross references. Policy twenty-one thirty, board member compensation and expenses. Policy thirty-one oh two, online instruction. I move that we receive these policies uh, for first meeting, that they lay on the table for thirty days.
Probably move that in a second.
Second.
It would probably move by Mr. Paul. Paul. Second by Lake Dunston. Questions or discussions? You're in on all of the papers, aye?
Aye.
In the opposition. Eyes Carrie, thank you very much, and the next item is Superintendent Ford.
So I wanted to highlight some good news for Nash County Public Schools, I have a letter, I won't read the whole letter, but. Governor Cooper is recognizing that this here is the fiftieth reunion for the first graduating class of Rocky Mountain High School. On riff on the fiftieth reunion, I thought that was very special. Um, also highlight Nash County was awarded um. Nash County has awarded the school district additional funds through ESER. Funds from uh, last year's money, the schools that are eligible are Naxton for Middle School. Middlesex and Springhoe, so that was a good thing for us. We also had a very successful lunch and learn, we call it lunch and learn two. Uh, last Thursday, it was sponsored by the CTE program Chad Thompson. I'd like to thank board members who were present. Also, we had a county commissioner. It highlighted our CTE programs, I know we just want to thank those who participated. And also the cohort two, the opportunity culture will begin next year. Schools participating are Red Oak Elementary. Coopers, Fairview, Middlesex and Bailey, we are excited for these schools for next year. Also, uh, wish everyone a happy holidays and a happy new year. Thank you.
Great. There's nothing for the chair of board, I would say, I appreciate all of you guys' hard work and efforts, appreciate my colleagues. What you guys done as far as aggressively trying to help working with the superintendent. Move us forward, I would love performance, I think you're doing an outstanding job in doing it, I. I think it would recognize at the state uh, school board conference and also from the recognition. Not only the state school, but from the eastern part of the United States. So looking forward as, as Bullard, Dr. Dunston, I like to echo that. I wish each and every one of you a Merry Christmas, happy holidays. Enjoy it, be safe. And um, we do have upcoming scheduled meetings. We have on for Thursday. Our first meeting in January will be Thursday, January fifth. And um, just marking accounts for that work session. That's committee meetings, work session or the work sessions for the regular board meeting Monday, January ninth. Five o'clock, board meeting will follow at six-thirty. Is there anything else that we need to hold this board attention?
I would like to say Saturday night, everybody.
So you know what? Thank you, sir.
Go Knights.
Go Knights. We do want to recognize you for doing an outstanding job for all the board members, the folks who showed up, they had a huge turnout on Friday night, so. For our team, congratulations to the football team. For an outstanding job, so please go and support the Knights as they go on to bring the state championship back. With spirit. If there's nothing else to hold this board attention. We're doing.